All right. I'd like to call to order the committee, the whole meeting for May 9th, 2023 at 5:33 PM. Tenants rule call.
Alder Persson's Wolf.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Terrence.
Here.
Kapusta.
Here.
Kubaki.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Madden. We have a warm present, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the public meeting law.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the minutes from February 28th, 2023?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that passes. New business, discussion regarding pistol shooting in Mesquite. Alderman Kubaki.
We had a brief discussion about this at the last meeting and had some people from the gun club here talking about the range of pistols. Pistols, a nine millimeter can go like fifteen hundred yards. So I don't see there's much hope for this pistol shooting in your backyard.
Anyone have any different view of that? All right.
What's the size of the yard they're talking about?
We're talking five acres and a minimum thousand feet from buildings, schools, parking lots. Shotguns are permitted in the city. Incidentally, a slug will go a half mile.
Exactly.
But so far we haven't.
Well surpasses that.
I'm sorry.
Fifteen hundred yards well surpasses the size of that lot, so.
Yeah. Yep.
And for your own, this is what the map is, so we had GIS put the, I know there are two colors on here, the gray area, which kind of extends a little farther, is fifteen hundred feet from any property, any structure, and a thousand feet is the mauve color. So it really.
It really isn't any place.
Middle of the lake.
Yes.
One, two, three, probably about a half dozen properties it might impact. Any further discussion on this? Otherwise, we'll just table it. We can at least give an answer to your constituent that brought it up, that we talked about it.
Yeah.
All right. Discussion, common council, future goals. I just wanted to get this on here, just kind of have an informal discussion about, is there some particular, is there any particular subjects, ordinances, or projects that you guys would like to bring forward to start discussing that we can maybe accomplish in the next eighteen months or anything? One thing I did bring forward, and just for preliminary discussion today, if there's any interest in moving forward, we can have more in-depth discussions on it in the future, but the old PD, right now that building's costing us probably around fifty thousand dollars a year for upkeep and heating it and everything else. I think we, at this point, we need to decide which direction we want to go on that. Last fall, or last summer, I should say, last spring and summer, I had a committee of citizens that got together and we hired Bray Architect to kind of facilitate the meetings and come up with a plan based on input from that committee. Alderman Kubaki sat in on that meeting. And we had probably anywhere between five to nine other citizens there at a time for each meeting. In front of you, there is some renderings and some layouts of a plan that had come forward of what we could do to make that into a community center and kind of tie that building into the park a little bit. The, unfortunately, I mean, I think it's a nice plan. Unfortunately, it costs money. So, if living in a really, there's some rough numbers that Bray put together that's at the back of that packet. Roughly about four million dollars to do that. And then I had Baird come up with, what would that cost us if we were to borrow four, five, or six million dollars? And what it would impact on your tax rate? The mill rate for, on an individual's tax bill. Now, that price on there, like for the four million dollars, is eight cents per thousand, so it's roughly, I'll say roughly three hundred dollars on a four hundred thousand dollar house in Mesquite annually. That's what the cost would be for a twenty-year note on that. You know, not necessarily that we would have to borrow all the money, but, you know, it's a, it's a starting point in discussion. Not necessarily that we have to do this particular exact plan that's on there, but I'm not sure if there's any interest in pursuing that for, looking at it for long term, maybe gathering some input from the community. I would strongly encourage, if there's any interest from this end, that our next step would at least start floating it out there in the newsletter and in social media just to see where people's initial thoughts are, and we could always go more into either a community survey, possibly a referendum on it, if you do a referendum, but those, the problems, the referendums, I'll, I'll talk about it more in my communications from the mayor's office, but current shared revenue bill that's floating out there won't allow future advisory referendum, so if we do a referendum, we're, we're in it, period, like even if it, so if it narrowly passes and we decide we're not quite sure, we're actually tied to having to do the project, so. Not sure if a referendum is necessarily the best way, I think you can get the other, other, similar input, other ways, if that's, if there's any interest, but other, other ways we could do with the building is, we had talked about defacing the front of it, like essentially tearing down the front half of it and just using that back half for cold storage, which is used, it is being used right now by Public Works for cold storage. Tear the building down altogether.
What's the cost of that?
I haven't gathered numbers on that yet, so.
That's something that I'd be interested in finding what, you know, because if you tear it down, you, you've got five million in it already. If you tear it down and build a new one, what would the cost of a new one be? I mean.
Probably double that.
Well, there's no basement, you can just build it on a slab, too. And not only that, if we do it, there's also a cost of upkeep and maintenance from year to year and the new employees and annuities of other things that are gonna keep on giving to us, so three hundred dollars a, a year for a house until it's paid off, plus whatever else on top of that. Three hundred and more house, the price of Mesquite houses are averaging more than four hundred thousand now.
The average house in Mesquite right now is four hundred and, I think, twenty thousand, but, ish.
Is there any marketability in selling it?
It's prime real estate right on Racine Avenue, I don't recommend that. It's right in the middle of our campus.
Yeah, it's too close to.
I, I don't think it's a good idea. I mean, you guys can, if that's the route you want to go at it, you're welcome, you know, it's something we could definitely look into, but I, putting something that's right in the middle of our campus between, I mean, we own from here all the way to Horn Brothers, I mean Horn Park, I'm sorry. Not Horn Brothers.
Clocks a lot of rents.
Which actually is almost Horn Brothers, block off. Yeah, I, I think it would be kind of a weird cutout.
Are there any, is there any borrowing that is about to be paid off?
I don't think so, because the only borrowing we have in the books right now is for this building.
There's probably some money coming from building.
Do we have any, like, expected revenue numbers from this building, like as far as if we, I know we talked about pulling the community, but to say, hey, we're gonna rent space and.
People talk about, and that, that conversation did come up, there is revenue from room rentals and stuff like that, but it's.
Not fifty thousand a year.
Yeah, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be. Yeah, you may be able to get fifty grand a year out of it, but that's covering your, it's not, it's covering your operating at best.
It's tough, it feels like we have sort of this giant wart and we're trying to find something to do with it. And we came up with this, like, remodel it, but did we really want a community center, or did we just figure that was the best use for it? And that's kind of why it's hard to say, put five million into something that might not be.
It is, I mean, it, it does, all the years I've been out here, people have been asking for something like that building, you know, there's a cost to it, obviously, and it's not one that's communities ever had an appetite of going for it. It's, if that's the route we want to go down, it's probably one of the least expensive ways of doing it, but it's not, it's not cheap either.
Was there some talk in the past about a community center and it pretty much got shot down by?
Oh, that was, that was more like, that was a Recplex and that was more of a health club type thing, that was huge. I mean, that was, back then, that was twenty years ago and that was fifteen million dollars back then.
Seems like there's been a lot of talk about parking's a lot over there, too, because we, I mean, especially if we're gonna keep using this building to vote, we do not have enough parking around here.
This does, if you look at, it does expand parking over there as well.
Does it?
Yeah.
There was a pretty good cross-segment of the community on this group, and there was a level of excitement about putting this, this together for groups and organizations having various meeting rooms. The library, for example, is booked, I mean, you, you can't get anything in, in the library. The building is not as bad as we were led to believe. It, it is repairable, it is fixable. The asbestos issues can be taken care of, the water issues can be taken care of. The rec department also has a need for space. If you'll notice, if you look at the last booklet that we received, there's a lot, a lot of activities that are taking place outside of the community in Franklin and in, in other various areas. So there, there is a need from the, from a staff standpoint for space like this. So I, it's a big expense, and it's an expense that, it creates an ongoing expense, as Alderman Wolf mentioned. But I think that if we do get some response from the community through social media, through other means, I think you'll find that there is a, a good level of excitement for a structure like this on this campus.
There, and Alderman Kubaki does bring up a good point as far as the recreational programming. It allows us to expand the amount of programming that we have available for the community, and especially in an age group that we can't serve right now, which is like six and under. So we can't get into the schools, like the gymnasiums, until later at night. If part of this plan, I don't know how much you guys have looked through it, but it would take half of that, the old garage and convert it into like a mini gymnasium for little kids. So it does serve, it would serve that area of programming for younger families and younger kids. It does have meeting rooms and activity areas for seniors that they could do clubs and card games and card clubs and stuff like that. It does have, the, the three rooms in there were expand, almost like the meeting rooms one and two, where you can expand them or use them as individual rooms. I, I guess, I'm not strong either way on it, but I, I think before we would just completely dismiss it at this point, I think Alderman Kubaki said, let's maybe, let's, I can leak some of it onto social media and.
What's your idea for the gym area? What, what do you see in there?
So mini basketball court, hoops, I mean, because the ceiling's only so high, a lot of multi, multi-use space in there. So could be used for all kinds of programming.
Okay, so it's just not going to be a big empty room?
No, it's, I mean, it's gonna be big, it's gonna be a big activity space, but yes, there'd be.
There's gonna be basketball in there, maybe soccer, other sports.
Right, yeah. You know, picture like, you know, pre, pre elementary school kids' size.
And if somebody wanted to rent it out for a birthday party and.
Yep.
You know, five-year-olds playing wiffle ball or something, it would be.
It would be, it'd be ideal for that.
Okay.
Sounds like a private business would be better for a party. They, what about renting an industrial space or something? I mean, it's gotta be cheaper to have someone have an open spot and, and rent it out than put five million dollars into that building and do this. I mean, I keep hearing, you know, you, you hear about a community center. I hear more about the roads than anything around here, and our roads are getting worse and worse. I mean, if you want to put five million dollars somewhere, you'll, you'll make a lot of people happy by fixing their road. It, it doesn't seem like a, a, a good cause at this point, that's why the, the cost of, of taking it down might be something we should look at. Of course, we did talk about leaving it and using it as storage like we do now. The, the other thing is that it's, it's against a park where we do like beer days and we have festivals and things like that on there. We, we're almost better off putting up a amphitheater so that people can use that more than, than, than the inside. Or, or connecting one, if we do a remodel, connecting it on the back half of this building, so there's an outdoor stage unit there.
This does have that tied into it already.
Yeah.
So it does do that. Amphitheaters, you're gonna be looking at two and a half million dollars just for an outside shell, so.
Well, depending how you do it, yeah, and, but I, I still going back to what I said about the money involved here. People, you know, we're putting more money every so often to the roads and it's still not doing the job for us on the side streets and, you know, we're past on some of these, past twenty-five years of repair and, and so we can't just do an overlay on them anymore, and we're, we're not even, you know, the patching isn't even working as good in some spots, if it's even done, the spiders or so on on the road. I mean, we can go out for hours on the road, but I, I see more need on, on, on the roads than I do putting a community center up right now. I think if you put that on social media, you'll find a lot of people agree with me.
Yeah, but quite frankly, at four million dollars for a building this size, it's fairly inexpensive to do. And, and I realize that the roads are, are an issue as well. You mentioned about the park, this does service the park. There, there's a, a service area for, for the park, for other activities, so it's really an enhancement to the park that we have right now. But again, I, I think that we should get a reaction from the community. I, I, I think we should not just set aside, set this aside forever. I think it's something that the community needs, just based on the input from the people that we heard on the committee itself.
If we're gonna go after that reaction, we should be looking at renting a space rather than spending this kind of money into it. And, and not only that, there's already private businesses that do what you said, you can go and play wiffle ball at somewhere, rent out parties somewhere, you, you have.
To rent seventeen thousand.
Senior, senior living homes that have space available where they already do games and stuff, maybe they will rent out stuff to you, there's churches around here that might rent out space to you for senior activities, if that's what you're looking for, I, I just think that.
And I'll, I'll, I'll disagree that there aren't, there, I mean, like I said, I'm not gonna, I'm.
Well, was it investigated? We didn't even investigate what it costs to tear it down.
Well, yeah, well, actually, we did, I just don't have the numbers here and I apologize. The renting seventeen thousand square feet of space, even just a shell, is gonna cost more than this on an annual basis.
I think you meant rent it, have somebody else rent it, is what you're meaning? Is that what you're talking about?
I, I don't know, just whatever. I mean, for some of the things we want to do, it sounds like, you know, people can do this through the private sector rather than to the public sector.
I didn't know if you were mentioning, you, you talked about potentially turning it into like a renting, leasing it out to somebody to use it for a business. I didn't know if that's what you were calling that.
Like I said, if you, if we're gonna look at renting spaces, this building, it's gonna cost more than this. And the other part is, we don't have that kind of space in Mesquite anywhere, because I get businesses asking all the time for, we're running out of space, I mean, for businesses.
Well, didn't we just open a place across from Walmart? Isn't there like somewhere, where's, wasn't there a?
Yeah, baseball, a private baseball organization opened up there, yeah.
That's, are you talking about?
I forgot the name of it, but.
Used to be Milwaukee Angels.
Yeah.
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 But I mean, if there's a need for it, I think the private sector would, would definitely be glad to come in and do that.
And then as far as churches and stuff like that, there, there's, there's no availability for anything like that, because the churches are also doing their own thing. I, I guess I, I don't, I, I think we need a better gauge of what the community wants than just throwing out there.
And I'm really torn out of myself.
Because once you tear this down, it's gone, and we're not gonna be able to do something else for this cost that would have the same, so.
I'm torn on it, I don't, there's no harm in seeing what the community wants to do with it. If it doesn't bind us to it.
Right, that's, that's kind of my thought, so let's at least, let's at least get some more input from them.
Yeah, I think we need to get more options from them than kind of lead them in one direction as a community center. You know what I'm saying? It's just.
No, I don't.
Leave it open-ended, so, you know, they can put something out there, would you, what would you like to see done with the old police station? Give them a choice.
I, I could say giving some choices, but you leave that open and you're gonna get.
Well, I think what he says, if you don't, if you just ask people if they want a community center, they're not gonna say, yeah, like, sure, that sounds great.
No, I get that.
Right, like, sure you do.
Not gonna just say that.
Can we have a pool, too, while we're at it?
I would get, I, we need to, we need to make a decision on that particular site, so, you know, here's one option on it, here's tearing, here's what tearing down would cost, here's what it costs to operate, leaving it as is right now. You know, so, yes, those choices, but.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just leaving it completely open of, what, what do you want to do, we're gonna get.
Right, I, I understand that, because.
Unmanageable amount of data.
I've seen that before in the past with people, you know, up on a Post-it note here and, what do you, what would you like to see in Mesquite over the next ten years? And there's a lot of different ideas on that board when we did that.
This probably comes in two or three behind Dog Park.
Isn't, isn't this what you did with the study?
Yeah.
To find out kind of what options or ideas, yeah.
Yes.
And here's something that I know has been brought up before in the past, hasn't a splash pad been brought up before?
Yep. Yep.
So, I don't know.
Quite honestly, splash pads are something that we can just do in our annual.
I'd be interested in what the survey says and how it's worded before we do anything. Again, you know, you're gonna raise people's taxes to do this, there's other things out there, I mean, people were talking about trails for a long time. People are talking about putting more pickleball, pickleball things, indoor, outdoor. There's a lot of, a lot of things that people want to do, but I'm going back to the roads. I, I, I think our roads are, should be our number one priority right now. Not saying that we should neglect this building like we have, because this is something we've asked for, for a long time, and it keeps getting pushed back for years on, since we've moved into this facility here. But it's being used now and we can keep it as it is. And.
No, it's being used for police training, which it doesn't need to be for that.
What I'm saying about this cold storage.
I have looked at renting it out as well, and that fell through, so, at least to recover our annual.
And, and we had private clubs that wanted to do something with that, whatever happened to that?
The, the kind of money they could raise wasn't anything sufficient for something like this, and that's why I said, if we go into this, it doesn't, that four million dollars doesn't necessarily be, to have to be the full amount. I mean, maybe we can, you know, do some naming rates and get some clubs to contribute and, you know, chip away a third of that cost. It's just a starting number.
I just think it's a big increase on, on homes right now at three hundred dollars, the economy's not the greatest, investments aren't good. You know, it, it's, it's, it's a lot of money right now to, to throw at people, you know, just to, just to feel good that we have a community center.
All right, so I've heard from Alderman Wolf and I've heard.
Okay, so here's my opinion. I think it's something we should put off for maybe a year and start getting serious about our road projects, because I think everybody here is getting their butts kicked from people screaming about our roads. And once we start working on those, bringing something like this forward won't be as huge of a crisis to those that are waiting to get their roads fixed. Because Rob is right, some of these roads haven't been touched in twenty-five plus years, and people are going, it's crumbling underneath me, what the heck?
And I don't disagree with you on the roads, and obviously, we made a sizable increase in our expenditure this year on the roads, we doubled essentially what we put into it, actually tripled.
But we took away from it.
For one year, for one year.
Right, well, and I think the plan is to bring that back every few years, but that's not the point. The point is, we need to do something with this building, I, I mean, we either get up or get, you know, finish or get off the pot, but.
But you're right. I, I said it's been way too long.
Sticking fifty something, excuse me, sticking fifty some thousand dollars plus into it every year for just to sit there and starting to look, and it's gonna start, you, you don't use a building, it's gonna start looking like it's a ghost town, we need to make a choice, one way or the other, so.
Well, I mean, fifty, fifty grand is like a fourth of what, I mean, you're looking at two hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, right? So fifty grand a year is way less than two hundred and eighty plus the expense of people, yeah.
I mean, why waste fifty grand on nothing? Because it's really.
I mean, I look at it wisely.
We're using it for nothing, it's.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I'm philosophically, I might have a hard time voting for this if it's five million dollars now, if you tell me it was free, sure, we're a whole nother discussion, but I, we're, again, I think we're making a decision and compounding it by saying, let's go into debt because we have a fifty thousand dollar bill. I, sure, it's fifty grand, but if we never do it and we pay fifty grand a year, we're, ten years, five hundred thousand, we've saved four point five million dollars on some of these projects. So I mean, I, we don't have a community center, but numbers-wise, it, it isn't illogical to say, leave it where it is and pay fifty grand a year and push it off for a future discussion, that's kind of.
And thanks for that, that obvious comment on there, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's where.
The point is, we are wasting fifty grand a year on it right now, so we either should stop spending.
But I don't agree that we're wasting fifty grand, yeah, okay.
Can we either stop spending the fifty thousand dollars a year on nothing and tear the damn thing down? Or move forward and start getting some input on it.
But the question I brought up was the maintenance.
Wasting fifty grand a year on a, a empty building is the ultimate in waste, that's more of an insult to our community when we, this, 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 this decision of what should have been done with that building should have actually been done five, six years ago.
I brought it up many times.
And it's been pushed off, and we, I'm at the point where I'm just tired of it, we have to decide one way or the other. It's not a hill I'm gonna die on for a community center, but I want to make sure that we are going into this with our eyes open that, okay, if we tear it down and we end up, you know, whatever direction we go on there, it's not a choice we can undo.
You said you got an estimate for demolition of it, correct?
Yeah, we have some rough estimates I can get on it, but, I mean, it's probably close to a million dollars by the time you haul everything away.
That's the total turnout, or we can keep some of it.
Yeah.
And for less and, and use it.
What, what's wrong with getting a reaction from the community?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we, we can sit here and talk.
I mean, I'm probably.
It's how you, it's how you do the survey, in my opinion.
I'm gonna get, do an initial reaction from the community anyway, it won't be too detailed, but I'm gonna do something at least to see where people are at, but.
A group of surveys aren't as good as you worded, so if you say, do you want this, or how do you, this and that, you know, if you don't give them the options, would you rather have it spent on roads, or would you rather have it spent on a community center? Or would you rather have it put on a pickleball court?
But let's deliver a whole picture.
You could give them five or six options, why, if we give them one option, then they only have one thing to choose from.
But Rob, we've gotta do something with the building.
We've gotta do something with a lot of things, we're gonna do something with the roads, too. You know, roads are only, they're twenty-five years old.
We've gotta do something with the building.
They're twenty-five years old, and a lot of them, our, our policy is twenty years, they should, something should be done.
I'm gonna.
We're five years past them on a lot of roads, or more.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put this onto a future agenda, at least, what we're gonna do with that building, we're gonna limit the, the conversation to that building, I'll bring back options as far as cost, what we're actually paying annually, what the cost will be to tear it down, what it'll be, cost, a rough estimate of, of just using that, tearing off the front and using that back building. Because one way or another, we need to make a decision on that building. I know, and I, we're not gonna be able to talk about roads and everything else, because that's not part of it, and I, I understand and I.
Well, it's where the money goes, that's all.
And I agree with you on the road issue, but that's not what I'm asking right now, because we're taking money that could be put in the roads right now and spending it on nothing.
The stuff that goes in there now, could they move it? Like, we have cold storage in there, could they relocate all that today? If I were to go to like blow up the building right now, they could put it somewhere else?
Not ideally, but yes, they could pack it into somewhere else.
We put a couple of new, we got some new units up in, in Industrial Park, it seems like we keep running out of space. But when you do this, come back to us, I'd like to, you know, have an idea what the survey is gonna say and what the maintenance cost on new building will be, too, because if we're spending fifty thousand now, we put a new building up, and we're spending fifty thousand then, there's no difference, except we spent five million dollars to redo a building.
Spending fifty thousand dollars operating something that people are gonna use.
Either way, either way, we're spending the money.
There's a big difference, right now, it's literally being used for nothing.
Well, the big difference is that we're gonna spend ten times that to make that happen.
I, I get that, but you can't just say it's fifty grand later or fifty grand now, it's, no, right now, it's nothing, it's literally.
I have a question, when you did that study, was any of the feedback from the group to tear it down?
No.
That never came up as a, even.
We talked about it, but it was not.
And that was not something that the study was.
No one in the group wanted to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, you really don't want to do it unless you, unless it's, it makes sense, you know?
All right, I'll put that on the future agenda. Any other issue?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
When we do get some public comment, add a price tag to it?
Oh, yeah, definitely, oh, yeah, you can't, I mean, it's not true comment, I mean, they can't make an informed decision saying, like he said, you want a free community center?
What it will cost them in taxes, yeah.
It's like our dog park, you know, well, it was free, so of course, everyone loves it.
But, you know, the, the cost also is cost on the tax base, too, what it would cost an average house.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
You're right.
I mean, I, I'd like to just be upfront on all this stuff, because.
I think we all do.
I mean, we definitely, I'm, I'm not, I guess, not doing something with the building.
You don't have the franchise on that, we all do.
Yeah, I mean, I was the one who kept asking, I think even Bob has brought it up a couple of times, what do we do with the police station, and.
All right, moving on, is there any other things that we want to look at?
Yes.
Things, yes, go on.
Boat launches at Big Mesquite Lake in Boxwell.
That'll be under my mayor's report.
So it'll be on your what?
I, I'm gonna be talking about it in our communications with mayors, but I guess it's goal, right now, we can talk about it as a goal. All the, all the boat launches to Big Mesquite, with the exception of Hunter's Nest, are unavocable. So I've got Scott, Scott and Ryan are working on options, and they're gonna be back pricing on what we can cost, it's not gonna be cheap.
Yeah, well.
I mean, we need to do something.
Right, the funds that we get from the, the, I don't know what that is, it's probably, may not be enough, but we need to keep them, I think, segregated, if they're not.
They are, but they're segregated, meaning that there, any cost for the boat launch, like, I mean, we, that's how we balance our budget every year, so if you have some person that, part of their job is maintaining the boat launch, a percentage of those fees are going to that, you know, so let's take, let's take Scott's salary, for instance, or Jeff's. A percentage, it's not just coming from, it's not paid for just with our property tax, part of it's paid for by the utility, part of it's. Part of it's paid for by the utility, part of it's paid for by some fees, part of it. So the boat launch fees are paying for a lot of things that have to do with, specifically the boat launch, but there's not just this fund where everyone sticks $20 and then the fund goes up $20.
But I thought...
It's supplementing our operating for that area.
But doesn't the DNR, maybe I didn't read it correctly, specifically state for the maintenance and upkeep of boat launches?
Which we are using it for.
But someone's salary is not maintenance and upkeep?
Yes, it is.
Because it's been a tight...
It does not, it does not just do itself. So Ryan's the guys out there, you know, part of it goes to Public Works, part of it goes to Tammy having, Tammy and Adam having people out there, checking people in when, you know, on weekends, collecting fees, cleaning, you know, yes, all of it's there. So there's, it's not just this pot that's sitting there waiting for, you know, so it's part of the reason we have such a low tax rate. We get creative on how we pay for everything else.
So, and you said you're getting a, going to be getting an estimate on that?
Yes, yeah, because we have, I mean, you can't even get a kayak through right now.
Right, and that's what I've been told.
Yes.
So, yeah, people have tried to launch at Boxhorne and, yeah, can't get anything in there, a kayak or a flat-bottom boat.
Durham and Boxhorne are both clogged.
It's just filled with silt. Yeah.
You can carry it out there.
You'd probably sink into your waist if you carry it out there. Any idea when that, we might get that back?
I talked to him today about it, so...
Okay. I've had some people try to get out there already.
Any other subjects, things you want to accomplish? Couple of things I've heard about, and I'm not sure if there's any appetite. People, since we do have golf carts are available now, they'd be able to drive on roads of 25 miles an hour or less. The two questions I've been getting constantly from people are, what about ATVs? And second one is, what about 30 miles an hour versus 25? Because it does open them up to be able to go, like, even to City Hall here, because this little road here is 30 miles an hour, so. Any appetite in looking at that? We have had zero issues with golf carts so far from the police's standpoint.
I've never even seen one on the road.
Right.
I think every time you raise a limit, they go faster. I don't care what, motorcycle, car, bike.
We're not raising a limit for them, we're raising their limit on what roads they can go on, because right now, they can only drive on roads that are 25 miles an hour or less. Golf carts themselves, I've got mine up, I've got mine souped up, I think as fast as they go and it might go 25, you know? So regardless of what the speed limit is, they're just going. People, the people that have them just want to be able to use them a little bit more than they can now. They're not asking to go down Janesville Road at 35 miles an hour, but quite honestly, like, to drive to the local, let's say. One showed up, I was there the other night for dinner and someone pulled up in one and I was kind of teasing them because even though they did 25 miles an hour roads, once they got on Hillendale, it's 30. It's not supposed to be there.
When we discussed this, I thought I had mentioned 30 because like Pioneer, I don't see any reason why. It's a 30 mile per hour road, I don't see any reason why.
And it's not something I want to change tomorrow, but I mean, I think when, if we look at this in six months, I come, is there an appetite for it? I don't want to bring something forward that no one has any appetite.
Are most roads 25?
All of our subdivision roads are 25.
Once you get outside the subdivision, they're not.
Most of those are 35, right?
Well, the main thoroughfares are 35, most of them, but some of these, like here, the industrial park was all 30, we just lowered it to 25. Part of the reason behind that was because we do have some companies that are using alternative vehicles to run from, Improv, for example, from running from one building to the next, trying to slow down traffic on that.
35. It was.
You guys don't seem like you have a big interest either way.
Well, here, this is my thought. When people call me and they say, I want to change the speed limit in our subdivision from 25 to 30, I say, you know, if the police put up a radar there and they tell me the average speed limit is 30 now, changing isn't going to change it.
Correct.
So if a speed limit is 25 and you're doing 30...
I'm not talking about a speed limit, though.
Well, that's what you're saying.
No, I'm just talking, no, 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 no.
What roads they can drive on?
I'm talking what roads you can drive a golf cart on.
Oh, I see.
They can't go past.
Yeah, I don't know.
So, for instance, they can't go on Pioneer, they can't go on Hillendale right now. What other ones are...
I mean, there's a number of roads that are, it's going to keep them off of Janesville and Racine and Woods.
But that is also going to slow the traffic up in front of them.
There's not that many. I haven't seen any since we've done it.
Well, but if you change, I don't know. I mean, so you're going to put a vehicle that's going 20 or 25 in a 30 zone...
I, most, most of these vehicles pull off to the side when somebody's coming up behind them anyway.
Well, you hope.
It wouldn't bother me at all. I was just saying, I mean, we have farm equipment driving that we go around. And, I mean, I appreciate the fact that we live in a community that we're, we have farms around. I love driving by the farms, taking my kids to school, and it's just one of the give and take with our community. So it, I wouldn't bother me if they could go on the other streets.
So, Rick, are you seeing city halls, getting a lot of requests for them?
I get, people ask it, yeah.
Okay, because I haven't heard a thing.
I haven't heard a thing.
I was just curious.
So we're just asking on where they can drive them.
You have stuff calling them.
And we do have a, and we do have a business in town that sells them too, so I mean, it can't hurt them either and...
And they're expanding, probably.
They sell them on a road that's 40 miles an hour.
You can't drive it off.
35 right there.
No, the new one, aren't they building a new one?
No, they backed out.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's a shame.
Well, because they're looking for a bigger area, so they're still looking around Muskego, but they, they realized that that probably wouldn't meet their, like, 10-year plan, so...
Cool.
I think it's certainly worthwhile to talk about.
I agree.
ATVs?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I just ask, what's the difference, really?
I don't see what difference. Most communities allow one, allow both, but...
I mean, a golf cart's not going to go 50, an ATV could. I mean, that's...
He's 70.
Yeah, oh, yeah, but...
Well, then they would get a ticket.
Would they?
Well, just like any other car speeding.
Yeah.
If they get caught.
It wouldn't bother me to have four-wheelers.
Things that aren't broken.
No, we're making it more flexible for our citizens, but...
That's one opinion.
All right.
I think we're asking too much on the road. ATVs really aren't any...
They're two separate ordinances anyway, so if I, we bring back one, I mean, ATVs is a whole separate section under state statute and everything else that we have to designate. It is, it's a little more complicated, it's easy enough to do, but it's different.
You know, how much different is an ATV from a motorcycle or a trike?
I think there's more ATVs in golf carts.
You have a shell, you have a rope, a cage around you in an ATV.
Yeah, so I don't, yeah.
Maybe.
In a UTV, I should say.
Yeah.
Side by side.
Yeah. You know, I don't have, I don't have a problem looking at ATVs either. You know, I don't see them as much different than a motorcycle or a trike or anything.
All right, I'll, for now on that one, if, as I get asked, I will tell them to talk to their aldermen and...
There we go.
You'll get your own input then. Anything else anyone would like us to look at?
I had brought up reviewing term limits. It feels like we're running regularly unopposed elections on almost every seat, including yours. And I know there's surrounding communities that do three and four as far as the terms go. I think it's a worthwhile discussion, I mean, even from the standpoint of just...
Term limits or term...
Term, I'm sorry, term length.
All right.
Yes, there we go.
I'm glad you brought that up because actually I'm going to be, I'm trying to gather some costs on it, but I would like to, and I'm not sure if we, how it works, but I'm looking at what the cost would be if we just had elections on even years on a local level. It would eliminate, so the problem is a school district right now has three-year terms, but I'm not sure if you know the answer to it. If the school district is the only thing on the ballot, do they have to pay for the election?
I don't know that.
Because I mean, are we going to get away from...
It's something I've been thinking about, but...